In here, out there, everybody, welcome to the city council. This is a regular meeting of the city council in the city of Waverly in the great state of Iowa. Today is Monday, November 3rd at 7 o'clock, and therefore this meeting is called to order. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, the city clerk has prepared for you an agenda, and I would appreciate a motion to approve.
To approve the agenda as presented?
Second. Thank you, and you have any discussion? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that passes unanimously. The same city clerk has also prepared for you a set of minutes from our October 20th regular meeting and the October 27th study session where we talked a lot about snakes. I would appreciate a motion to approve.
Move to approve the October 20th, 2025, regular meeting minutes and October 27th, 2025, study session meeting minutes.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passes unanimously, taking us to item E, public hearing. Because this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the second reading of ordinance 1173, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of parcel ID 0903283003, owned by the city of Waverly and formerly known as Washington Irving Elementary School from an R2, that is a residential district, to an R3, also a residential district, and amending the Waverly zoning map as provided by this ordinance. The mayor and the city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Does anyone rise to speak to changing this ordinance? Does anyone rise to speak? This public hearing is closed.
Written or oral comments?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Written or oral comments?
Thank you.
None.
Can I have a motion then?
I move to approve the second reading of ordinance 1173, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of parcel ID 0903283003, owned by the city of Waverly and formerly known as Washington Irving Elementary School, from R2 residential district to R3 residential district, and amending the Waverly zoning map as provided by this ordinance.
Second. We'll give that to councilperson Jones. He hasn't gotten any minutes yet. Any discussion? Friends, this will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Wolf.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. For those of you keeping score at home, Tim is not here tonight. He had a conflict. The guest councilperson for November is Mr. Gavin Stagie, who has been invited by councilperson Jones. Would you like to introduce your guest?
Sure. This is Gavin Stagie. He owns Stagie Construction. He's a businessman in Waverly, Wortburg grad. I've known Gavin for close to 20 years, and just wanted to have a business person sit on the council.
That's great. Welcome, Gavin. We're glad to have you. Now is the time for public comments at our items not on the agenda. Does anyone rise to speak to the council tonight? Good evening, Mr. Schneider. If you'd identify yourself, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Matthew Schneider. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here tonight as a concerned Waverly resident, and I want to speak out for real safety solutions, not flashy gimmicks. And if we're honest, Vision Zero are flashy gimmicks that are designed to divide and harm communities. The Vision Zero road diet, I'm not going to talk a lot about that, but we've got Iowa DOT doing an investigation and full safety and implementation review, and are pleased to see new federal guidance even here this fall, that US DOT is explicitly warning against road diets due to emergency response delays, worse business conditions, and crash diversion specifically. The red light cameras sold to us as Vision Zero Silver Bullet at the August 28th, '23 council meeting, the camera company promised a 30% to 50% crash reduction on Fourth Street out of 638 crashes. The talk at one point slipped down to 100 and some crashes that they'd improve, but nothing was clarified, and that 30% to 50% crash reduction figure stuck like glue. And at the time, we were discussing both red light and speed cameras, right? And so when you voted yes in '24, no one clarified the dirty secret that these cameras can spike crashes, and they do. And it's misleading, and it was flat out false. So I urge all council members and the public to watch the 8/28/23 council meeting. It's two hours, but there's nothing else on Netflix anyway, so please review that. So let's fast forward to now. Camera's been on for three months. We've had 11 crashes on that corridor. Six of those are injury crashes. In a comparable period, three months before, one. So we went from one injury crash to six. And these are the serious DOT reportables. I have no idea what the 1050s are saying. But at 40 miles per hour, we're trading fender benders for very serious hospital visits. And the crashes that they claim to catch are dwarfed by rear end crashes that they're provoking. The entire city of Los Angeles scrapped their whole red light camera based on just what I said. Worse are ancient traffic signals. They're a relic, incompatible with any real safety push. The vendor should flag that during their standard site survey. Basic contract law and Iowa code kind of demands it, and it would be kind of hiding material facts. Now, I don't know if that's the case, but I think it's something we have to look into because it doesn't look like a partnership. It looks like we've been set up. And the money, we're talking like $35,000 a month that Waverly residents have to pay. 40% of our residents right now have food insecurity, and those dollars could be feeding way of a really families and not genep tech. So I urge, let's pause the cameras, launch a full safety audit on them, implementation flaws, signal upgrades, the works. If we're serious about safety, Vision Zero is clashing with that progress. And I want to just talk about our signals for just a moment because it's old. I think we should ditch it, the whole thing, and go to a modern AI traffic system. It's not as expensive as it sounds, and it'll pay back residents within a month. Smarter lights sinking city, they're citywide. It would keep Waverly moving. They would, should be a number one priority in my belief in our budget because that means traffic flows smoother, crashes will plummet, idling drops, we're going to save time, gas wear and tear everywhere. Businesses will thrive, and emergency response, this is the real winner here. Sim modeling shows a massive improvement to ambulance, and it'll not only shave seconds, but we're talking minutes. And a lot of lives we can save annually just by doing that. And as a bonus, people will be happier. And when they're happier, they're also kind, Mayor. So I think that's something we really need to look into. Pause the cams, probe the problems, and let's get to smart road engineering and smart technology because our city deserves better. Thank you. And can I just say one more thing about these flashing beacons? Because I was in favor of them, and I'm still, I'm not against them, but they're serious. 55% to 90%, 99% the federal highway administration says people don't slow down. Well, even at the best, that's 1%. So I just think we need more warning on those, that that traffic's not going to stop. It's not guaranteed when you push that button. So, but we are seeing there's more fatalities nationwide because of those, and they've come in on Vision Zero, and the feds are going to have to clean this stuff up because it's a mess, and it's misleading people. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else rise to speak to the council tonight? I see no one, so we'll move on. We're at item H. This is the consent calendar. Friends, you've got 12 items in front of you. Can I have a motion?
I move approval, the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Thank you. That's a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passes unanimously. We are now at G, regular business, number one. Resolution 25140, a resolution accepting requests for proposal, known as an RFP, for the sale and/or management of the Waverly low rent housing properties. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 25104, a resolution accepting requests for proposals, RFP, for the sale and/or management of the Waverly low rent housing properties. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Probably should, just so people who are listening know what's going on here, about a month ago, there was a joint meeting of the council and the Housing Commission to take, and one of the results, to keep things very brief here, one of the results was that we should look at, since the Housing Commission has been in place for decades, probably at least 50 years, probably more than that, that there may be better ways that we are able to assist the people who are living in those communities than the current structure that we have with the Housing Commission basically being in charge of those areas. So all that this is doing at this point is to ask people to make proposals back to the council and the Housing Commission of what kinds of things are possible for us to do as an alternative to how we currently have that structured. So we're not looking at making wholesale changes right now, but there may be changes that will be coming about in the future. Does anybody disagree with that synopsis?
Well, we are actually looking for proposals, not just ideas, but actually.
Proposals, yes.
You know.
Who's going to spearhead this? Is that you, Jack?
Seth is here from the Housing Commission as well. We have talked, so we spent September going through all the options that we discussed at the joint meeting. It's in the statement, you can do nothing. We can bring in a different management group. You can sell it to a pro, for profit, nonprofit, keep it as is, et cetera. Then, no action was taken in October's meeting. It was determined that the recommendation should be made, and it was the recommendation of the commission to go forward with accepting proposals for possible sale, profit, nonprofit, or different management changes, whatever it may be. Our goal would be, if this is approved tonight, would then to try and find a broker. We know a number of them that do this. And a HUD attorney, because no matter what you do, it has to go through HUD, or it's not going to be approved anyway, and bring them in to help spearhead this with us so that we have a little more knowledge of how this works because we're not that fluid in HUD. And I don't even know if HUD's around right now with everything shut down and how it's working, but that's a whole different set of problems for us. But it would be to help the group get some ideas of what these proposals really mean, what they would do, and then that would all come back to you at some point with those descriptions so that a decision could be made if you wanted to make a decision on those.
Yeah, thank you. That much, much clearer than my attempts at trying to explain what we're doing here. But my point was, is that what we are doing here is requesting proposals. We're not making a final decision in this vote.
That is correct, sir.
But the intention would be that we would very seriously look at these proposals and perhaps make a final decision on one of these proposals in an upcoming meeting.
And I know there is some fear that it will change. It will stay low income housing, HUD housing. So that, just to make sure people understand that.
Yeah, regardless of the ownership, HUD is the dominant force. It contains and controls everything that happens there. It still has to be followed to HUD guidelines, no matter who owns it or whatever does happen. That does not change.
Well, and I would add that part of what's precipitating this is the fact that our paperwork is out of order so that we had not been able to get reimbursed from the federal government for the low income housing. So I think that's one of the things that made it clear that there's a need for change, that how we have been doing it is not working. That paperwork is not in order and needs to be cleaned up, and the people we have are working very hard to fix it, but it's a mess, and someone with more professional skill would do well, be better for us in that position.
I don't think the city needs to be a landlord.
Yeah.
I think James had mentioned that.
Yeah, I would agree with you, sir. I don't think we should be a landlord. I don't think we do it very well, to be honest, and I think there's other opportunities to serve people better than what we're doing.
And that may have made some sense 50 years ago or 60 years ago when this was implemented, but I think there are other things that we need to look at now.
I agree.
Well, and I suspect the government red tape has only gotten more thick.
That does happen occasionally, doesn't it?
Jen, I know you are our council liaison to the commission, and you've also held some listening posts up at the homes. Can you, do you have anything more you want to add that you've heard in that capacity?
Just that the community is very much at unease, not knowing what the future holds. And so if we could gain some clarification on where we're headed, I think that will help. I'm continuing to have listening sessions just to deal with issues that are still going on out there, and we'll continue to have them. But I also, I sent an email earlier. I'm hoping to have, hold community-wide listening sessions on what affordable, accessible housing and transportation wants and needs are, and to all sections, including the low income, so we can actually have a plan or report to share with people who do whatever the future is, so we can share that with them so we can be included. The people of Waverly and their ideas can be included, whatever the future looks like there.
Yeah, I've gotten written letters, a couple of written letters, and some emails, and just personal conversations with people. I think it's important to reassure the residents out there and people who are looking at that housing for their own futures that it's not going away. The goal is to manage it better so that it lasts and remains the place that people want to live in this area. I think there are many people out there who are very happy to be living there and very grateful to be living there. And so I think that they are not necessarily the most vocal component of the people that live there, but they are grateful for that housing and appreciate what's happening out there. So I think that's important to emphasize.
And one of the most recent reports of a physical entity that came in and looked at the physical, they got very high reports for the actual physical aspect of our housing. So that is something that we really should be very proud of.
I was just at a sort of a town hall type meeting at the library last week while they do their strategic planning, and they asked us to, separate from the library, but to list what would make Waverly an ideal city to live in in five to 10 years, and also what are Waverly's weaknesses in housing and transportation. Came up as both something that would make Waverly an ideal place to be and something we have to work on. So I think, you know, this is just one component of that, making sure this development stays around.
Any more discussion? Resolution 25140 is on the table. Are you prepared to vote? This will be a roll call vote.
Rafi.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf. Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item G, number two, Resolution 25141. This is a resolution approving task order number one from Bolton-Mink to begin evaluation and preliminary design of flood mitigation improvements to the Fourth Street Southeast. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-141, a resolution approving task order number one from Bolton and Mink to begin evaluation and preliminary design of flood mitigation improvements to Fourth Street Southeast for a not-to-exceed amount of $84,650.
Second. Any discussion?
I feel a little like I'm having deja vu with this.
What are the flood mitigation improvements that they're referring to?
That's what they're going to find out.
That's what we're going to find out.
Good, because.
We talked in the past, and we budgeted for this once already before, so we have the funding available to, there are ideas about putting up earthen berms and stuff like that, which I don't really care for personally, because the only thing I know about berms is they all fail at some point or another. They're man-made, they're not going to do what they should do all forever. You know, when the dry run was done, it accentuated where the water goes, got it out of here faster. I'd rather see something like that instead of trying to prevent it from going somewhere. Mother nature is going to win, and it's not going to go well. So that's what we're hoping they'll look at, various designs, various differences, what can be done. It's a different firm, we've used in the past, fresh set of eyes. I think we're just trying to figure out what is possible to hopefully keep that area accessible to a certain level of water. At some point, it's not going to happen. You just simply can't go anymore. But a number of the past floods, it would benefit from having a way to continue to get that water through without overtopping some of the roads, or at least one access point to be able to still get in and out of there, keep the electricity on, which we saw last time. We had no damage because some pumps could stay running, things like that. So that's our hope with this, that's our goal. I mean, we've talked about it for years. It's just time to get this moving and see what they can come up with.
I think it'll be good to have a fresh set of eyes with a different engineering company, and.
I agree.
You know, I have memories of previous discussions about this, and there's two issues, right? Can you prevent flooding there? And then how do you get services in there and get people out? And the only way you're going to prevent flooding is gigantic wall, a barrier, and I can't see us ever doing that. Way too expensive, ruins the whole atmosphere of that area of town. The Green Bridge would have helped. A flood, what, a high enough design for a Green Bridge would have helped get people out. But, so I'm interested. I think it's fine to put this money toward looking into options and see what they can come up with, and then we can decide.
Yeah, I don't think we can stop the flood, but it would be nice to kind of prolong access to those neighborhoods, see what we can do to help, you know, get the water moving through. You're right, I think we have a new engineering firm. I think this firm has a different set of expertise than we've seen before, so I'd love to see what their ideas are.
I know the resolution is for flood mitigation improvements on Fourth Street Northeast.
Southeast.
Southeast. Or southeast, I'm sorry, southeast. But I'm, are they going to be looking at a broader area or only that half a block area where we have flooding on Fourth Street? And what I'm getting at is, we brought up a number of times about Seventh Avenue, right just to the east of First Street, of raising that up, the street up three or four feet that would allow people maybe an extra hour or two hours to be able to get their things out of their house before it gets overtopped. So would this be broad enough to include a, take any look at that area, or would that be a separate contract?
Well, defer to Justin, he's talked to him as well. I think it's a broad look at the entire thing, not just that street.
Yeah, you'd be correct. They did some preliminary, preliminary work, if you will, on looking at the areas, and this was, Fourth Street is what we originally talked about just because it's a viable solution for that. The issue that you referred to on Seventh Avenue is where we'd have to actually put in some physical HESCO barriers to allow for that access at that time. We're trying to do something, we don't have to add any additional items that could fail like James had mentioned.
Right. Well, they did that a number of years ago. They put HESCO barriers in it, and it was overtopped fairly quickly. But I think that the discussion we had before was to actually raise the street permanently so that a temporary HESCO barrier wouldn't be necessary. But, you know, I'm not sure. I would like at least a preliminary, preliminary look at whether that is feasible or not because water does weird things. I mean, you block at one spot and it squirts out somewhere else, so that might not be something that we would want to take a look at if that's the case. But I know a number of people have mentioned that that should be something that we take a look at.
We can call David.
Yeah, if only we had a civil engineer in the building. Please identify yourself and then go.
Yep, I'm David Millmeyer. I work for Bolton and Mink as a project engineer. So I know originally the goal that we got brought in to look at was specifically Fourth Street. We will have the FEMA modeling from the entire area, so if that's something that is worth taking a look into, our water team is more than capable of looking at that. And one of the big things that would be a deliverable of this is we can provide a map of, here's your 100-year flood right now, here's where the water's going. If we make these improvements here by raising the road, putting a combination of box culverts or storm control structures there, here's what your 100-year should look like in the complete condition. So that's kind of where you would see those impacts at Seventh Street or anywhere else in the area that if you're changing conditions, you're going to have water elsewhere. And if at that time, it seems beneficial to do some additional work, we can definitely make that recommendation. That would probably, that would be one of our deliverables that you could see of, here's what it is today. If we do the improvements, here's what you can anticipate in the future, and kind of show you, instead of guessing, show you exactly where you can expect to see. And part of the project is also to do a no-rise certification, so showing that this project isn't going to make flooding conditions at that 100-year flood any worse somewhere else. Right. Okay.
So you can start your work, and then if it turns out that you need to look at Seventh more or some other area, you can come back to us.
Yeah.
And say, hey, we need to revisit this contract.
Yep, and I can definitely highlight that with our water team and just let them know, here's another area of concern while you're in there in the model. Take a look at it. And I'm sure they'll have no issue taking a preliminary look at it under this resolution. Yeah.
There has been some, some work on that before, I don't see that, but it may have just been our city engineer just drying that up. So, yeah, that would be something that I would highly recommend is that at least take a look at that, at Seventh Avenue, and see if there's something that you might recommend we do there. The other caution I'm going to have is, you know, just the history of that area on Fourth Street. Many years ago, we did some work on it, put some large culverts in to try to move the water out. I don't think the culverts were large enough. I don't know what happened there, but it ended up causing a lot more flooding, backing the water up behind it than, it really, really caused some real severe problems. And.
When was that?
Oh, gosh, early 80s?
Oh.
And then the culverts were taken out and just basically made a dip in the road.
Yep.
So if you're going to be recommending culverts, whoever's on the council at that time is going to have a real self or the people in that neighborhood that they're not going to end up making, making the situation worse than it was before the culverts were put in.
It sounds like you're going to be looking at that.
Yeah, we'll be looking at all the options, and with some of those smaller culverts, it is a potential for them to clog, and that's probably what happened then of the water couldn't get through.
Right.
And you're backing up worse than you would have been otherwise. But that's something our water team's pretty advanced at looking at, and we'll definitely take that into consideration.
You've had the 2008 flood, which cleared out a lot of that area. You've had, the dry run creek is completed, the inflatable dam's completed, so much has happened since.
Right.
That's why we'll take a fresh look at what it could or could not be, and I think it'll be good.
And with regards to Seventh Avenue Southeast, it's important that either Seventh Avenue Southeast or Fourth Street Southeast be open. So we need one of those roads to be open for longer during floods because that, when they're both closed, that neighborhood is isolated. I don't care which one is the better one, and if they're, if they're focusing on Fourth Street, if that, if they can keep that open during floodwaters, that's great. Seventh Avenue is another option, but one of them is, needs to be open so that we can get into that neighborhood. So.
With the current general agreement between Waverly and Bolton and Mink, we could always just take a quick preliminary look at, and it's going to be the same FEMA model from, so it's something we can definitely pass on to, or definitely take a look at and make an informed decision on.
I agree, this is a very worthwhile project. I do have some questions on the administration costs. Seem a little bit high. $60,000 for a full-time representative?
Yep, so that's an optional one that's not currently included. So that's if you wanted an inspector from Bolton and Mink to be there every day as they're doing the project installation. If it was not full-time, if it was being there on a specific day, we'd likely do that under the existing agreement, the reduced rate, $100 an hour. Or if Waverly staff are, have the availability and are comfortable with doing the inspection themselves, then we could, that line would just be not applicable at that point. So that'd be our. So that'd be our full-time RPR inspector out there doing the, watching the pours, all that. So that's, that's an optional item if, if you guys wanted it.
So if we approve this tonight, you do your study, you're going to come back with a more detailed project.
Yep.
Or solution.
Yep.
And perhaps more fine-tuned on the cost?
Exactly.
Administration cost.
Yep, so in the construction administration you're seeing there at the bottom, is a completely optional one that if city staff want to do it, that's something that we don't have to cover, or we could supplement. If there's certain pieces, like the box culvert, you guys want our structural team there, making sure it gets installed correctly, that's perfectly fine. Otherwise, we can give direction and supplement the city staff in any way that we can. So that line's not in this current resolution. It's one that if we got to the end, and you chose you wanted that service, we could definitely provide.
Okay.
All right, Resolution twenty-five, one-forty-one is on the table. Are you ready to vote? I'll take that as a resounding yes. Carla, let's have a roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, which brings us to Resolution twenty-five, one-forty-two. Now, this is a resolution accepting the asphalt patching fall 2025 as complete, and approving the final payment to Kluzner Construction Incorporated of Farley, Iowa. Can I have a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution twenty-five dash one-forty-two, a resolution accepting the asphalt patching fall 2025 as complete, and approving pay estimate number one in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents as the final payment to Kluzner Construction Incorporated of Farley, Iowa.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thank you. That passed unanimously, which brings us to item H, number one. You have reports from boards and commissions. You only have one this week, it's from Waverly Municipal Housing Commission, those minutes from September sixteen. Any questions or comments? Staff updates. Let's hear it, Justin.
Just a quick heads up, the yard waste hours have changed from seven, seven to five-thirty. They're now seven to four-thirty due to daylight savings time. Also, the tentative close date is the twenty-second of November. As of every year, we usually kind of extend that if weather cooperates, let's call it that. I'd also like to congratulate Grant Ben Scooter for being named Region One Operator of the Year for Iowa. And that's the Iowa Association of Water, or Iowa Water Environment Association. So that's a very big, big honor.
Yeah, that's great. That's all we have tonight, sir. That's all we have? All right, well, then let's get to the council. Council city comments from the city council members, we'll start with you, Professor Bergen.
I just want to encourage everyone to get out and vote tomorrow if you have not voted yet. And anyone who wishes to discuss city council business, I will be at the porthouse after the meeting.
Councilperson Jones?
Nothing tonight.
Councilperson Myers?
I would echo what Brian said about everybody get out and vote, and also want to express gratitude for all those who have stepped up to put themselves forward for local offices, because it's hard to find people to do that. Appreciate everyone who has.
Councilperson Dranko?
Nothing that hasn't already been said.
Councilperson Rocky?
Garrett asked me to pass along some statistics about the community gardens, since he's not here tonight. Ron Lent from the ISU Extension Office sent us some stats. So, the Waverly Community Gardens produced twelve thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-six pounds of food this summer. And it was produced at, I think, about ten cents a pound, because most of the improvements we made at the garden were grant-funded, and then the labor is, is volunteer. And if you tally all that up, we probably saved area families over twenty-one thousand dollars in food costs for that. So I'd encourage anybody who's interested next summer to come out and help us. That's it.
Thank you. Councilperson Wolf?
The food pan, little food pantry at, outside of the United Way office was very much utilized over the weekend. In fact, Jill had to come in twice to fill it. So there's a lot of fear around food, lack of, or access to food. Continue to donate especially funds to community, local community action, United Way. Food Bank are the three main sources in the area. Hopefully, things will get figured out. There will be another listening session at Waverly Homes on Thursday at, from one to two-thirty, to listen to issues. And I wanted to share gratitude for the council and the current members. I am, I've learned, I know I'm not very, the most vocal person, but when I do have a question, somebody else asks it. And I, I've learned so much that I feel, I feel better prepared to ask questions when some of you are leaving. And I just, I'm very glad to have each one of you, because I've, I've learned something from, from each one of you, so thank you.
Guest councilperson Staggie?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, that takes us to the mayor's comments. As I understand it, the court has ordered the USDA to expend its emergency funds on SNAP, but that will mean SNAP recipients will only be getting fifty percent of their regular payment. So, citizens of Waverly, you have neighbors who will be hungry next week. Waverly, be kind. I would adjourn him, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We are adjourned.